Okay, the time is six sixteen and it's May seventh. And this is our regular select board meeting, our bi-monthly meeting. We're gonna go down through, we're gonna open the meeting with a roll call. Select people present. Jeff Peters, Mike Gould, Josh Tracy, Brian Mullis, town manager, Michelle Nichols, Kelsey Shannon, Lance Johnson, and Matt Blockler.
Travis.
Hi Travis. Okay. We probably ought to have everybody introduce themselves again. This meeting will be listened to by different people, so we'd have to do all the same things over again. Kelly, we'll start with you.
Kelly, do a resident.
Stephanie.
Say your name.
Okay, and we'll start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item two is open session. Does anybody have anything for open session tonight? Okay, seeing none. We're gonna move to item three, signing minutes of the board meeting. These are the ones that you emailed us. Okay, and then the next item is public hearing and special board meeting minutes, which that's those, correct?
Yeah, they were all together.
Read here, these are the public hearings.
Yeah. I think we just signed all those.
Okay.
We have to leave it together.
Leave it together, got it. Okay, item four is review of the treasurer's warrants. First one is payroll, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one. This one is.
It is void because what I discovered was if you stay with that pay schedule the way it's supposed to, at the end of my quarter, if I make it the first Thursday in the month, all my quarter figures go away. So we had to void one year long and make it come out on the last day of the month. So that I have a quarterly report, so.
So this one.
That's just for you to see that we did actually void.
So this won't be dealt with until the next meeting?
It's all been dealt with already.
It has been. So we don't need to sign it?
Nope, that's just FYI.
Item B is our accounts payable number thirty-two. I noticed. When you see that number, you always know where that one's going.
Most of it is. Was the one we missed, Prescott, in that one?
Yes.
Yes.
The down payment stuff we'll discuss a little bit later here. What they've done to this point is in that?
Yes, five thousand dollars and we cut them a check or at least you'd authorize us to cut them a check if we're these having to.
Correct. Okay, moving on, item five, old business. The first one in this category is proceeding with the Mill Street issue. So we're back to Mill Street. So we have, as a board, to make a decision what to do with Sixth Mill Street and what to put on it for guidelines, I guess.
You're looking at me like you'd like input.
I think, I think with all the discussion, with the discussions we've had in the past, the condemn notice, just so it's not occupied at this point. And I think, I think we need to have that conversation, where do we go beyond that?
Well, quite honestly, I think we followed letter of law. And then if you vote to condemn, I get on the email our attorney in the morning and let her know. And she does the legal stuff that needs to be done with it and we put the notices on the door. And the thirty days start and then we, we give Stephanie and her family the opportunity to have that thirty days to do something or to report back to us at the end of the thirty days that they're not in a position yet, but they think they might be, and then you can entertain that at the time. We're not on a, we're not on a strict situation where we have to, you know, we've got leeway, but I think it is important that we don't allow anyone to inhabit that house in the meantime until something is done.
And I feel because of that, and not just because of that, but what's happened in the past with that. I don't want, I don't want Stephanie to be able to make a bad decision and go back into that environment. And I think.
I think we're all in agreement there.
I think a condemn notice ensures that for us.
As much as anything can. I believe you're correct.
I also feel that we have a responsibility to Stephanie's neighbors to move this forward, however that look.
As do I.
At a reasonable rate, if it's a health issue. To the neighbors.
Do you guys as neighbors feel like you're exposed to an health issue?
Yes, 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 because it's fly season, flies, green maggots. And, you know, we can't, everybody, we're like elderly, we all have underlying health issues. We can't have like this toxic neighborhood with the old spores and whatever gets released into the environment. So as much as we love Stephanie on the health issue, I mean, we've gotta look out for ourselves as well. And I would support condemning it just for our sake, so that actually probably should be wrapped if you could. But I don't know if they do that around here. But I've got.
I say we proceed with it.
I don't know.
You got any info Josh, what are your thoughts?
I mean, I, I think we should proceed with it more on a, on a health to the neighbors. That's, that's my biggest thing, I mean, I, I feel bad for Mrs. Sebastiano because I feel like if you make the payment and you pay the taxes on it, if you choose to live like that, that's how you choose to live. The other part of me feels bad that she has to live like that. But I, I think solely on the, the health of the neighbors, we need to move forward.
So at this point, I think I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with a condemn notice on the property. And at the end of thirty days, we'll reevaluate progress and then make a decision from there. And vote? It's a vote. Stephanie, I want you to understand what, what, what we just voted on. So that does not mean we're taking it, that does not mean, all that means is you can't live there. Contractors can come fix it, you can't, you can't reside there, you can't live there.
Yep, the only thing this does Stephanie is say that nobody can live there until the property is made safe.
That's all. You still own it, where, all we're doing is, this condemn notice means it's not inhabitable. You can't live there, you can have contractors fix it, you can't live there.
This is kind of on topic, sort of. School Street behind me and the American Legion building are also molded out. So I feel unsafe as far as that goes.
So how we deal with that is you would.
How do you deal with that?
You would have to notify Michelle, we'll put it on the agenda for the next select board meeting. We'll have a topic and discussion on it and we'll move, we'll move on that.
Cause maybe you're not aware, I had a realtor take me through the American Legion and it was, I didn't even go in the basement, but the first floor is covered in hairy mold and the basement was, I, she took pictures and it was nasty.
So I tried to contact the owner of that place the other day because of the roof issue. And that's the same deal as with the Wells Fargo Bank, this some company out of Herman that just doesn't give you any chance to make contact with a real person to let them know, so I'm not even sure what the. We, we tried, tried on that and.
Someone's aware that they put a tire problem.
They put a tire on the roof? But the mold is in the basement on American Legion.
I'm just saying that somebody's aware that the roof got ripped off.
Okay, and School Street, same thing, mold, mold, mold.
So what we need to do Kelly is just notify Michelle, she'll get you onto, it'll be two weeks from now, but she'll get you on the agenda for the next meeting and we'll dig into it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Item B, inspection of fire trucks. That's you Matt?
That's me. So the trucks all went in for their annual inspections, I know I've spoken to Josh and Brian a little bit about it. But two of the trucks did fail. The tanker failed only for a couple of small things. It does need rear brakes, shoes, and drums. I get a quote today to do that, to take care of that truck, to get it inspectable, it'll be about thirteen to fifteen hundred. Which isn't a big deal except for the fact that we're already really over on our maintenance for the year. The biggest issue is the rescue. The rescue truck failed this year. It's nineteen eighty-eight, it's getting to the point where the amount of money to fix it is kind of a real decision on how many times we're gonna put it into it. The quote that I got today to fix it is, assuming we can find parts around twelve thousand.
Wow.
But he said he's having a very hard time finding parts because of the age.
What's wrong with that truck?
Needs rear leaf springs, brakes all the way around, rear, four rear tires. The rear differential tube on the passenger side is rotted and he's concerned that it's gonna break off and the rear wheels are gonna keep going.
The axle tube on the housing?
Yeah, the tube on the housing. Has taillights and reverse light issues that nobody's been able to figure out yet, I think it's gonna have to be rewired. Passenger side wiper doesn't work. I think that's the majority of the list, they, oh, the exhaust, has an exhaust leak as well, but, so for. So for all that, he said if he can find parts, we're looking at that area.
Is that a quote or an estimate? It's an estimate.
It's, yes, because he can't, he can't even find parts to verify a hundred percent the cost of them.
So twelve K's, fifteen K, eighteen K.
If you can find the parts.
If you can find the parts.
If you can find the parts, and that's the thing, he was, that's why I didn't even get the quote until twenty minutes before I got here because
Third second.
He was still trying to find locations of parts, so that's assuming we can even find anything. Where it's an eighty-eight white GMC, it's probably we can find that stuff, especially like a rear dip. Leaf springs can be made, but. We're just kinda at the point now where how many times do we put ten, twelve thousand into it?
Where are you at budget wise on it, in your maintenance, but you said you're.
My budget for maintenance is gone.
We had to spend five thousand dollars to replace that valve on the tag truck.
That, we planned for five, I think we budgeted five thousand for maintenance and that used all of it up. So this would be.
One's a motorcycle style, man. Yes, we've got a long ways to go.
We've got a long ways to go, so we're kind of at a point where I know to Brian, we just gotta figure out what we're gonna do. Are we gonna try to find money from somewhere else to keep that thing limping along or are we gonna look at our other options?
And the stickers expire this month?
They expire, uh, May thirty-first, yeah.
May thirty-first.
The tanker had some other small issues, but we took care of that stuff in-house. Some light issues and an oil leak that we took care of, that Josh helped us out with. So I think if we put the thirteen, fifteen hundred into that for the brakes, so I can go down and get a sticker back on it, it'll be good for, it'll be good for a year, we don't know what next year we'll bring. Hopefully it'll be all right, but we don't know.
And the rescue truck needs to go each time?
Yeah, the biggest thing is it moves half of our equipment and pretty much all of our people because everything else is a single cab truck. So it really, it holds the jaws of life, it holds all of our cribbing, all of our struts, all the two of our air packs. Cascade, yeah, I mean, that holds the majority of everything we have, so.
What's the cost to replace that truck?
Well, you have different options obviously with everything. You could go a cheap option, which obviously you can get what you pay for. You can find a used truck that somebody is getting rid of that's, you know, less than ten years, probably newer than that one. I've been finding them for forty-five thousand-ish. Or you can go like two, early two thousands up to two thousand and ten, you could get something decent for probably seventy-five to a hundred. Or you could also build the route of getting a cabin chassis and a rescue body and building your own. I don't know what the exact number would look like on that. Probably be a little bit less.
But if you reused your rescue body, you'd have to, you'd have to get a number, a big truck.
Yeah, the biggest, the, probably the best option with that, if you were to build a truck, you'd get, so when we get rid of that, ideally we'd be trying to downsize to like a five fifty or something longer. Yeah, it would have to be four door, because like I said, that's how we meet with our people. Once that pumper goes out with two and if the tanker goes out with two, that's four people that we can move without that rescue, that's four people, most people are bringing their own vehicles, which they're only gonna do that for so long. So we're kind of up against it, I don't know. I've been looking online at some of the suppliers, seventy-five to a hundred, you can find something pretty decent, but you gotta find that money too, just like everything else. You might be able to find a cabin chassis that's decent somewhere and a rescue body and build your own.
This rescue body is used up or is it?
The rescue body isn't that bad, the problem is to find a big enough truck to put it on.
Right.
You're back to paying that money.
And you're also dealing with electrical issues still.
Yeah, yeah, so the taillights don't work most of the time, the reverse lights come on going down the road just in drive, I don't know why. I've had two contractors look at them and everybody's put money into it except they fixed it, but they haven't. So I think it needs to be rewired completely, but you know, how much money do you put into it at the age that it's at, you know, you know that, I mean, you guys are all smart guys with vehicles. How long do you put money in a thirty-five year old truck?
I'd say your rescue truck's older than two-thirds of your firefighters.
Yeah. It was bought brand new for Old St. Brooke, Connecticut, they got their life out of it, sold it to us and I mean, it was already a well-used truck when we got it. And now it's an extra, extra, extra well-used truck.
So the same question applies like always. You've explored anything for surplus or grants or anything that's out there?
Yeah, grants.
You beat those bushes pretty hard.
Grants have been beaten, yeah, the only, there's only one grant that will even touch a truck purchase. And we've tried that whole road and we haven't had any luck with it. We tried it to replace with a different truck, but it, either way, it's still the same deal.
You think the, you think the rescue body itself with the appropriate truck is reusable?
It probably is, I, because it's aluminum body, I mean, it can't rust out. The body itself isn't the issue, it's the truck underneath that's on the car. I just don't know, to, to get a big enough truck for that body, I don't know if you'd end up spending the same amount as you would just spend to get a, you know, five fifty or something, that's the only thing I'm.
Really, you wanna go to the four door.
If we don't have a walk-in body like that one, you need a four door.
And that's a sixteen foot body, so if you take a four door truck with a sixteen foot body, you just made this, this a three, three truck shop, you know?
I guess why I'm asking, through the equipment auction, Jamie Robinson dumped some of their trucks there. There's a truck that's available, I looked at it to buy it myself. And it's Freightliner. It was, it was one of that fleet maintained trucks, it's got two hundred on it. You take eighty-five hundred dollars for it and it's a very clean truck. Takes a legit sticker and I don't know, I mean, seventy thousand might as well be seven hundred thousand at this point with what our budget looks like.
Right, like obviously I know that we have some, and when I say some, it's not a lot, but we have some put aside in that reserve, but it's not enough to go out and buy something outright, so. I mean, that, something like that sounds like a great option, if it's doable, you know, I don't know, cause I.
You'd have to measure wheelbase.
You'd have to measure wheelbase, you'd have to, yeah, and.
The beauty to it's the right color, it's the right kind.
And then you'd have to pay somebody to swap the body or whatever and all that, which there's some costs that would come with that, but.
But if we get out of it for kind of fifteen grand, I'd rather do that than put thirteen grand in that truck.
Right, that's where we're at right now. Even, like Josh said, if he quoted us, quoted us twelve in parts or part come by, it costs us fifteen. And then we sunk fifteen into a still thirty-five years old, next year it's probably gonna be another twelve and it's just how many times do we do it?
I'd rather spend the fifteen grand and put a fifteen year old truck.
I am not partial to anything in particular, all I know is that we can't keep running through that. It's just, it's gonna, it's gonna nickel and dime us right.
I, I have a real aversion to throwing good money after bad.
Me too. Like I was just telling Matt, I, I feel like if you put thirteen grand in that nineteen eighty-eight relic, I'd almost rather take a crack at paying eighty-five hundred dollars for that fifteen year old Freightliner and that's got a legit sticker on it and it's a real truck. You'd be further ahead than putting money in that thing that we got.
And we're looking at something that's gonna buy us what, seven years maybe, ten years?
If we were to buy something like that, yeah, probably, I mean, you might be able to get another ten years out of it. Like I said, the rescue body itself isn't gonna rust out, it's aluminum. We may have to do some little things to it, but if you get, the electrical part of the truck is gonna be, we may, well, I say that, but the body has a lot of the electrical for the rear lights, so we may have to rewire that. So there might be some costs of that, but it's still not gonna be, still not gonna be fifty grand.
I'd rather have fifteen grand wrapped up in a fifteen year old truck than like to put thirteen grand in a metal dinosaur.
Even if you were to take the body off, rewire the whole body, put it on this different truck, you could easily, I would think, get ten years out of that, I would think.
It sounds like it might be a pretty good option to pursue.
And it's funny, I just, I, I helped Jamie move some trucks down the auction, that one didn't sell. And we were gonna bring it back and maybe we ought to just have the conversation with him and just see if he's interested in doing something with the town on it. It may be a. It's gonna be a better roof than a truck with the axle tubes rotted off that's old enough to have grandchildren.
Well, that's the thing, isn't it? So we already know that the chassis is tweaked a little bit because when we come up the hill School Street, make the corner up the hill, pops U-bolts in the rear. So we've been knowing, but as always, money has been an issue, so you just fix it and get it limping back where you gotta go. But it's to the point now where it's, a lot of the guys have a real concern in driving it because it's to the point where they're concerned, they're concerned that axle tube's gonna come off. Rear wheels are gonna be going down the road, they're gonna be sitting there in the middle of the road.
I've been in enough bad spots and burning buildings through forty years of doing this to know that we need to make it as safe as we possibly can where we can for our firefighters. So, and having a vehicle that's unsafe is unacceptable.
I think if we're thinking that route, the very first thing we need to do is climb underneath it and make sure that structurally, the body, being aluminum, isn't all cracked underneath. Cause there's no point swapping a cracked up body.
Right, and I probably know as far as that goes, I just know that obviously it isn't rusted out, it's in the wood. But I don't know, maybe it's gonna crack, I, I haven't really looked.
But I think at this point, I think what we're looking at is learning some, maybe, maybe all of us on a cullender and look at it. Measure the wheelbase, make sure it works and if it looks like it's viable. Right. It looks the same to me, but.
I think if we were to do something like that, get us ten years on that and put brakes on the tanker and get us hopefully a few more years until we're in a better position where we can do what we'd really like to do with a bigger two foot one truck, then we can get by for a while longer without spending a ton of cash.
Jeff, is that an emissions truck?
I'm sure it's gonna be, all his are new enough where.
Oh, they still got stuff from the early two thousands?
No, no, this is, I think this is the last year, I think it's.
Oh seven?
No, I think it's in oh eight or oh nine.
So it doesn't take def, but it's gonna burn the system?
I'll, I'll give you an answer to that question.
Just something tough.
Yeah, right now we only have one that takes damage, but.
And it's the right color and the truck is, the truck is flawless, a beautiful truck. It's an automatic.
Single, is it single, yeah?
Single cab.
But if it's a single cab and we use the same body, that's really not a big deal because the current one's a single cab, all the seating is in the back of it.
So the body's a transport?
Yeah, the body's, it's a walk-in, so there's a bench in the back where people sit. The biggest thing is if we couldn't replace it with something that has that, you'd have to have four, four door because nobody can, you ain't can ride on top of the damn thing, so.
And it'd be the same length that it is now even in the middle of the building.
We have, we have a foot or two to play with, but I don't know how long exactly it'll be, we'll have to take some measurements and see.
So that being heard, I think we're just gonna make a decision what direction to go and it sounds like that decision would be looking into that option, looking into this truck.
Do we have eighty-five hundred dollars in the budget anywhere to spend on this truck?
Well, we have it.
You have it in capital reserve.
For fire trucks.
We have the fire truck reserve that ideally is getting built up for the next work, just about if we, we don't have it in the regular budget for it, we would have to come out of it.
You would have to come out of the fire truck reserve.
Right, we're already at the point right now where we'll probably be all right, but we're not, there's no extra money for this. Unless we hit the lotto.
Maybe we can sell it at a certain price, I don't know where we're going.
Well, that's, that's kinda where I was going with that, I think, I think the first phase of that operation is number one, maybe the, us as a group slide underneath of it, make sure that the body's serviceable. With some electrical repairs to the lights, the body would be serviceable. If it is, we can approach. If it is, um, we can approach A E Robinson and just fill them up. I do know eighty-five hundred dollars to buy the truck, I know that for a fact, cause I was gonna buy it this week myself. I don't need it, and if, if it benefits the town, the town can approach Robinson's and buy it themselves. So at this point, I, I guess I'd just put it in form of, I don't know if we even really need a motion, I think this is discussion at this point, but.
Yeah, actually I don't think we, we ought, we ought to get our ducks in the wrong before we.
So, in the form of discussion, I think us as a group will slide under it and look at it, measure the wheelbase and we'll contact Jamie and just,
Yep.
We can look at the truck, we can drive it.
Are you gonna contact him?
Yep. Yep, um, we'd be willing to, and just ask him, you know, how charitable they feel to the Town of Sangioves.
We can leave A E Robinson on it, we'll just put fire department under it or something.
In the past with Dover Fire, the Robinsons have done quite a lot for us.
Right, I said, we might be better off approaching Mark on this one.
Well, Jamie was assistant fire chief in Guilford for several years, I believe. I, 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 I think, you know, I think he'd probably would be the one of them.
Yeah, and. So, that's just a matter of discussion, I think after this meeting, we'll just run out and slide under the truck, we'll take a quick measurement on the wheelbase and we'll just contact Robinsons and see, see where they stand.
Yep.
And see if it's a viable option, and then if it looks like a viable option, we'll turn it into a motion at our next meeting.
Maybe, maybe something to get ahead of the ball is call Mike again and ask him rough estimate on what he would charge to swap the body over and rewire it. You know, just rewire the lights, you know?
Yeah, just re, yeah, all of it is just a rewire.
And, and, and it could be a truck problem with the wiring.
Well, that's the thing.
They get rid of the wiring problem when we swap the body.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'll ask him.
Okay, we're gonna move on from that, that was just a topic of discussion. So next, item six is new business, um, A is court summons Mr. Eaton.
I believe you will have a copy of that.
I've read a copy of it.
This was more or less at this point, I don't think there's anything we do except wait to hear from the court, so.
Yeah, I mean, it has to be filed and then we'll get a court, we'll get a, but is, is something changed from the last time we dealt with him in here?
I haven't had a.
To bring this?
I haven't had a conversation with him, I haven't had any communication whatsoever with him.
I mean, there's no confusion in the conversation we have, we were, we're gonna take care of it.
No, we, we were gonna take care of the material. Right, and that, that we both were gonna take care of the material.
We said we would pay the cost, but it was off the counter.
To put it in.
Has it changed, you, you have the material, you're right, Josh.
I think, I think it was the material.
And we can go back, just check over.
He's saying, what, Moosehead, he paid somebody to put it in, right? That's what he's.
It's not in.
It's not in, I wrote it in.
It's not in.
So it's not mailbox.
Did you take a picture of my mailbox though?
No, I didn't take a picture of it, but I wrote a, I can.
But I think we should. Right?
I drove by yesterday, my son. So. Yeah, we sure did get okay, seventy-dollar. Post office, well, in the meantime.
My, I mean, my issue with this is I, I, I understand that the expedient thing and maybe even the cheaper thing to do would be to just hold on this, but I think we need to be cognizant of, as we have many times in here, of setting any type of a precedent, I, I think we need to, I think we need to fight this guy in court on this.
Love to.
That's your decision, not mine, but I think that.
Well, we have to get attorney involved, we have to get our attorney involved. And that's, that's unfortunate over a super mailbox and, and I'm very disappointed in this. We have a mailbox policy, the mailbox policy's very clear, you're on your own, you put your mailbox out. And we extended an olive branch and got spit in our face and I'm very disappointed.
You're disappointed, I'm kind of angry about it, to be a hundred percent honest. But.
I, I, I think we need to rescind our offer.
At this point, this, this, this changes the whole, this changes the whole thing. The, the mailbox policy, the law reads that we're not responsible for that mailbox. And we offered in good faith to pay for it, and in return we get a lawsuit where we need to hire an attorney at the taxpayer's expense.
Small question, do we need to hire an attorney or can we give them a representative?
Technically, we don't.
Technically, I put this case together Ricky T, I mean, the thing is this, is in this also, probably our attorney ought to fire back a letter saying that if in fact you're losing this whole thing, you pay the attorney fees on top of that.
Right.
I think, I think she's gonna have to put that paper together, yeah, but I'd love to take this case.
But I think the cost of just having her send a letter, that's.
Well, I, my initial thought was to, uh, scan this and send it off to Kristen and say, what you think, what do you think? However, everything we do with Kristen or any other attorney is billable hours. So I really wanted to kind of get a pulse of the board before we did that. But I'm very comfortable scanning this and, and filling Kristen in on this and saying, you know, what, what are your thoughts? The board would like to know what you, what you think on this.
And I think we need to do at least that, to be true.
I do too, I, I, I think they need to understand that if, if this does not go their way, there's a, there's a large cost involved. And at this point, I also personally feel like we should rescind the offer that we made, we made a good offer to them. And they didn't accept it, so I, I feel like we should.
Let me run that one by Kristen as well, um, you know.
And he refused it, what, at least twice?
I thought he, he refused it right here that day.
It's on the record, on vote, reported.
That, that the offer that was made was refused.
Yeah, so the, I guess that's kind of a moot point if he's refused it then.
I just don't feel like this is good citizenship. This is gonna cost a fair amount of money, and every single person in this room's gonna pay for it.
Sure.
That's not being a good citizen.
I agree with you.
The, the hard part of all this is, is that if we make it too hard for him and he gives up on this, he's going after Chris Moore. That's just gonna be his next step, if he went this far to go after us, he's gonna go after them next.
Right.
But I also feel when you set a precedence, I mean, we have, but, you know, that we're not gonna do this.
We're not going to, and that's, I think that's pretty clear among all of us that this, that policy exists for a reason. I feel like we should, I feel like we should just present the thing to Kristen for an opinion.
I will do that tomorrow.
We'll be on, we probably oughta make a motion on that.
So when, when is this all gonna?
Well, don't know, cause that's, it has to be filed first for the court to be a date. He's, he hasn't retained an attorney either of us, but I looked at it. His attorney would do it.
So I make a motion that Brian contacts Kristen with a copy of what I have in front of me, the defendant's copy.
Take a second.
Vote. Okay, signing the grading and mowing contract.
Yes, I handed them to you.
Hang on, they just buried them to the other stuff. Thank you folks for coming. So this first one is contract for cemetery mowing. And this contract is between the Town of Sangioves and Orman Gray.
Must be starting right off, huh?
Uh, I'm gonna give you a call there and see where, I've been out looking around, there's nothing that needs to be mowed yet, but it's not gonna be long.
Okay, this next one is Town of Sangioves contract for park and other lawn mowing for twenty-twenty-five. This contract is also with Orman Gray in the Town of Sangioves.
We'll just need to contact Orman and contact, uh, for the grading and mowing, contact Steve, come in and sign those at some point.
Okay.
This contract is Town of Sangioves for road grading for two thousand twenty-five. This contract is with Lawson, Steve Lawson, the contractor. Okay, moving on to item C, toll masonry.
Basically, um, I had a few concerns, one thing, we kind of left things a little bit open with Steve about who was gonna pay for what. Along this, I, I didn't feel we had a clear resolution to that. The other thing, we had tolls do the chimney work, which was integral to having the roof leaks repaired, so, I mean, we all agreed that that was something that needed to be done, and they were qualified and they kind of, they've done the work and we paid them for it. What they're looking for now is a one-third deposit on the foundation work. I am not a hundred percent sure, looking at Steve's numbers.
Right.
If we have enough money left out of that four hundred and forty thousand dollars to pay for all the foundation work. As far as grants go, I've been beating the bushes hard and I've even got a couple of grant applications out there, the CBS funding, the Cynthia Mitchell interiors one, there's a couple coming up through the, there's like a Save America's Treasures, one coming up that we can apply for this fall. Uh, I did check with our legislative representatives and, uh, the person in Augusta that, for the state for the ten million dollars. Um, the interesting thing there is that, that the ten million was included in the biennial budget as required by law. However, they didn't, uh, they didn't raise funds to administer the grants in the biennial budget. So the money is there, but they don't have the money to pay the people to disperse the money. It's, if it wasn't sad, it would be comical.
So, 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 so the thing that we voted on and it passed, and they got the ten million and we can't access the ten million?
That is exactly right, and that is because our representation in Augusta chose not to put that in the biennial budget and what they are going to do is submit it in a supplemental budget that I believe is supposed to go to debate this summer, the spring or summer, and the best-case scenario is if it is included in that and that passes, then the, uh, grant, the grant funding for that will open up in October.
So can you apply for the money, can they, can they award it, I'm sorry, could they award it to us and then just say when it goes through? Will you get it?
No.
That is ridiculous, what was the whole thing all about then?
This is politics.
Yes, at a different level than here.
Unbelievable.
There you go.
Basically.
Ten million dollars.
Basically, we are part of a ten-million-dollar pawn that is part of a bigger chess game in Augusta. And, uh, our representatives, just so you're aware, are Representative Jim White and Senator Stacy Guerin, and I'm sure they would be happy to explain that to a constituent as they did to I, so.
Well, I will ask them.
You have homework, Kelly.
I'll get on it, you guys, I can be pretty bad, but I will get on it, seriously, I, I know, I'm gonna call Brad Miller, I'm gonna go to Yarmouth, I'm not even kidding. What the hell?
I, I believe you, Kelly.
If you're a citizen exercising your rights, more power to you.
Okay, I'll see what I can do.
So, so the bottom line is, we're not gonna get any grant funding from anywhere that's gonna affect what we, what is in phase one of this as far as the foundation work.
Right.
I put in for that congressionally-directed spending to take, to pay for, like, some of the wiring, some of the extra, that extra hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars worth of extra stuff on the bottom, like the bottom paragraph of his estimate.
Right.
But the foundation, I'm not sure if we've got the money there or not, we need to sit down. I think we need to figure that out before we pay toll, we do a third deposit toll for a retainer.
That's correct. And I think the toll is who Steve really wanted to do the job with, correct? But he's not the only qualified guy, right?
True, and, you know, I met these guys, Mike's met these guys, I think you met him, but this year you were, you were here. They're nice guys, they're professional, they're high-quality, they do work for Colby College, and you know how fussy the people at, um, facilities at Colby College have to be.
Right.
So these guys do quality work, they're good people, and technically, when you talk in the scope of this, they are local, they're from Scowee, and they're for fifty miles away.
That was one of my concerns though, I mean, right in this town, we have a business operator that is also a licensed qualified mason. So before we go putting money down on a project, we ought to look at that whole scope.
My thought is maybe we invite Steve back over for another meeting.
I think so too, before we make any decision on this, I think we absolutely have to.
That was what I was gonna propose, that was gonna be my proposal here today.
And I do think that the, the people that are paying taxes in this town that do the same thing ought to at least have a shot at this job.
I agree.
And this, this chimney tuck-in point was a little different situation, because we had to coordinate the roofing and the chimney and the lift and all of that. And I understood that was the most cost-effective way to do it, and that's why it was done that way. But the foundation part of it, I, I think we talked to Steve, I agree with you. So.
So here's what my proposal is to handle this, I, I get in, in touch with Steve and with Dennis Cannonville and Melissa Getchell, and we bring the building committee and Steve and the four of us and whoever in the public wants to be present, together to sit down and have a meeting and discuss this. And do it as soon as we can.
How, how much are they asking for down, what's the third?
I can't tell you right off the top of my head, Josh, I'd have to go in and look.
How much was the roof?
The roof was gonna vary, the ballpark at eighteen thousand. What the masons, what the masons did was five thousand. The repair of the roof leaks beyond what they've done is we were quoted eighteen-eight, I believe.
For everything, for the roof.
So that doesn't leave four hundred and twenty thousand left of the foundation, and that's not enough?
I'm not a hundred percent sure of this.
Right.
So that's something we need to.
We can't make that.
We want to spend all the money anyway, cause we wanna get the money from the other people.
Right.
I would wait until we get it.
We want, we want, we wanna proceed cautiously in a way that makes the, gets the people of the Town of Sangioves the biggest bang. Well, we want, we want, we wanna proceed cautiously in a way that makes the, gets the people of the town of Sangerville the biggest bang for their buck, for lack of a better phrase.
Right, and I'm not comfortable just, just passing out a third of the, of the cost of the foundation as a repainer.
And neither was I.
And you're talking, so the toll masonry part of it is just the relaying of the brick on top of the new foundation? That, that's his piece of work?
No, I, I think Steve had him doing more than that. The other thing is, this, this, uh, an outlier here that kind of fell by the wayside and hasn't been really discussed since that meeting we had in Scowehegan. Was this other basement wall option.
Right.
That my understanding was Steve was going to look into, and I've heard nothing on that since.
And I want to hear on that.
So I, I, I just feel that it's time we had another meeting with Steve and just kinda.
Oh, you agree.
Kinda get everybody's ducks in a row. So if that plan works, and I don't know if you wanna make a motion out of it or not, that's up to you, but.
I don't think we need a motion just to schedule a meeting.
I will schedule, I will schedule a meeting and, and we'll, you know, we'll post it as a public meeting in legal form and.
Right.
Everything and get that, this, you know, as soon as we, as soon as we can pull it off.
And I think in that, in that conversation with Steve, I think he needs to be made aware that we really wanna. Have more of a complete picture of every option we have available on that foundation. So that he doesn't come, you know, so that he comes prepared to discuss all the options we have.
This is not how I thought it was gonna go, at all.
Did he, did he?
Oh, it's.
Neither did we. He didn't put it up to bid, but did he, or did he just use this?
This was, this was another concern I had is, we need to be clear. What our, our lines are with, with Steve and with the responsibilities of the town of Sangerville, because we have a policy. That says anything over $15,000 goes up to bid.
That's right.
And we need to make sure that we're all on the same page on that.
And we need to clarify, if we turn the job over to an engineer, does it still need to go up to bid?
Right.
That's. We need clarification on that piece.
So I'll put together an email, I'll copy everybody, you know, that just.
Right on, that's cool.
That covers this.
All right, so we'll be moving on. Item D is cemetery deed. We must have, yeah. So this, this deed. We're gonna convey this cemetery lot to Joyce Cody. And this, does she pay for it up ahead of time, or is it?
Yeah, it's all paid for.
It's all paid for, so this is just the signing of the deed itself?
Yep, and then we have to record that for her.
So I gotta go back and register deeds again?
No, throw it in the mail.
Throw it in the mail?
Throw it in the mail.
Nice.
I've been going to register deeds so much, they don't even ask. I, I don't even have to empty my pockets, go through the metal detector now.
I go walk when I go through there.
Huh?
I go walk when I go through there.
Okay, we're gonna move on to this next item, solar sheep. Oh, we went.
Well, unfortunately Lance disappeared on this, because the. And Michelle and I were talking, I'm not sure why, we're not even sure why we've got this on the agenda.
I don't know if it's just because they were born away with wanting, they wanted sheep inside. The solar fence to eat the grass and, instead of mowing.
Who has?
The Chad, what's his name?
The, there's a gentleman by the name of Chase.
Chase Bradley.
Chase Bradley, who's a representative of the solar company. They called me and asked if this was something that was possible, and I said, I don't know, I've never heard of such a thing. So I said, let me take a quick look at our ordinances. I said, we have a livestock ordinance.
Which I read that and I saw.
So, because we have a livestock ordinance, I'm gonna turf this to the code enforcement officer, because that's really his purview and not mine.
Is this something they've been doing, or something they wanna try?
Well, apparently, um, this is off on another conversation, but Jason Higgins does a lot with these for Chimbor. And he said this is something that's fairly common in other areas of the country.
I've never seen it, and it was, I've gone back. Well, I mean, are they gonna fence it in?
They're gonna, they are gonna fence it in.
Are they gonna hire somebody to maintain this?
As I say, what do, what?
Our guidelines.
There's animal health and welfare stuff here, too.
Right.
They're gonna eat the wires.
Oh.
And they're, and they're gonna play king of, they're gonna play king of the hill on the solar panels, like sheep will do.
So. Because we have a livestock ordinance, I, uh, I feel this should be, be up to Lance and the planning board and the board of appeals and all that to handle this solar sheep issue. But I'm not quite sure how we even wound up with it on our agenda.
I don't even.
We don't know how many, we don't know, you have to hire a.
And I guess our. I think, I think, I think when, I think when we discussed it, we said we probably ought to advise the selectmen and get this out into the public, that this is something that's.
We're gonna have solar sheep.
That's being discussed, um.
We're gonna not, I, I saw my daughter this afternoon, she works for university domains and manages their body, and they're gonna try putting cows in a solar field.
They're gonna make them higher, she said.
Yep.
But they better be.
The cows are the solar panels.
The solar panels, but my thought is they better be doubling up on bulls and everything else, because. As you guys know, cows can push on stuff, but.
Cows do, yeah, cows do.
I mean, how fast will that get, really?
That's, one of the things that they're supposed to be testing is putting the cows in a small solar area with the fence.
So I think maybe you should turn some pasture there, where you have your cows into a solar farm job.
No solar farm on this.
None, neither. So, yeah, I think our biggest concern is the health and welfare of the sheep. Who's gonna tend the sheep? Are they just gonna be turned loose?
Right, I don't know if they just come and drop them off for a couple days, and they do their thing, and they'll pick them back up.
Like I said, I was hoping Lance was gonna stay for this part of the discussion.
Sheep mow some serious real estate, they.
Do they really?
Yeah, they.
Yeah, they're the best.
They, they're almost, like a cow is, uh, one cow per acre, that's what you need for grazing per summer, and a sheep is almost right there with it, one little sheep.
Really?
Yeah.
And they'll eat one just grass.
They'll eat everything. All right, so we'll just move on from this.
So turn this over to code enforcement.
We'll turn it over to code enforcement, and everybody's aware, including the people listening to.
Yeah, do they have to build a barn? I mean, what if they're gonna do, truck the sheep back and forth then?
We don't know.
Honestly, don't know. I really don't, like I said.
They have something to look at, though.
I, I was, I was stunned when they brought this, when he brought this up, and I said, I don't have a clue. And like I said, I looked, we have a livestock ordinance, I said, you need to discuss this with code enforcement.
Okay, we're, we're aware of it, and now the public's aware of it, if they're listening to this meeting. Okay, we're gonna move on to item seven, town manager's report.
Uh, well, I've got Mill Street on here, I think we've pretty much beat that topic to death. Uh, the work on the town hall, we've discussed, toll masonry was here last week and this week, they completed the work that needed to be done on the chimneys. So that the chimneys are now, uh, safe and not contributing to the leaky roof.
Yay.
I get a, and on this conversation with Steve, figure out when the roofers are gonna be here, but my understanding is the roofers are gonna be here within. A matter of days to a week or two, I don't know if the weather's, it'll, there'll be some weather dependency on that. But that's the next phase, and then as we've discussed, we're gonna go to a meeting with Steve to see what goes on beyond that. Uh, contacted surveyors on the town property dump issue, Weber Surveying, said he'd do it if he liked to, but he's just packed, busy, just didn't have time to do any. Thing for us this year, so I went with Sack and Brake, and the reason I went with them was, one, is they were the next local one, and two, Steve had used them on this project over here. So, uh, they've been in contact, and I looped Josh in on this, because he really knows kind of the most about the situation. Uh, and I believe I emailed you guys copies of the last email conversation estimate and everything there on that. Uh, let's see, met with the Parks and Recreation Committee a couple times on their plans for this summer. Highlights are, we're gonna, uh, have talked, Josh and I have both talked with Scott Reynolds, he's, uh. Gonna do some repair work on the docks and get those in for us into the two ponds in the next couple weeks. Uh, something while I'm right on the topic that I wanna mention publicly is, uh, the Center Pond Boat Landing Road. Uh, Josh and Butch Lemieux went out kind of on their own and as a volunteer project. Did some work on that road to get it passable for people to use, so that they don't have to use the private road to the right of it. And I've already had, I, I've been down there and looked at it, they did a great job, I've already had one person come into the office to thank them for the work they did, so. So I'd like to make sure that we.
Go.
Say thanks to Josh and Butch for that work. Uh, I've talked with, uh, when I went around with John yesterday, we're gonna make sure that he gets a greater in run over the parking lot and the road into the park down here as well. Uh, one of the things the park has asked me to do, which I don't think will cause any controversy, but might. Is right now the road is open all the way down to the beach area, they'd like to move the rocks. To make that a parking area, so that you can't drive all the way down to the beach. Apparently, that's the way it was right up until a year or two ago. And, uh, I didn't see any reason why we couldn't, we couldn't do that, there's probably really no reason anybody needs to drive down to that beach. So, uh, the other thing we've got. Yeah, that's one of the issues.
Right.
One of the good things is the, the teen group over here at the recovery center, Alan Burgess's group, they have volunteered to come in and police that park through the summer. And pick up all the trash, they have needle disposal kits, they're gonna, they've asked to take that on as a project for, for the town.
They've been a huge, they've been a huge.
And getting to be bigger all the time.
Yeah.
The, uh, we've got some, uh, we've got some concerts coming into the gazebo lined up this summer. Uh, and the other kind of big thing is that we're, uh, we talked about putting a walking trail in around the perimeter of the park, like a one-mile walking trail. So, you know, multi-generational, different groups can enjoy that, have a place they can go walk here in town. So that's gonna be done, you know, probably a volunteer labor type of thing, again, this group from the recovery center is probably gonna assist in that. Uh, and I wrote in here a paragraph, I said, kind of as a combination of planning work for this trail at the park and, uh, some conversations I've had with. With ATV enthusiasts and some of them in the Dover Club. Uh, and I know, uh, Rotano's there with Two Nights Brewery, really like to see ATVs have access to their business. I kept looking around to see what there was for money out there for trails. And the state is sitting on a pile of money for trails. There is grand money available out there, and later this month, in a couple of weeks, I'm going to a grant writing workshop in, uh, Orinaw on how to. How to try to access some of that money for us.
How much does that cost, to take the class?
I think it's free.
I wanna go.
Uh, look in, it's right on the website, main trails.
No, no, the grant writing, the grant writing class.
Yeah, I, that's what I'm saying, if you go onto that website, that's all I did to register. It didn't say that you had to be anything specific to register, there's a bunch of these all over the state, I mean.
Okay.
So, uh, on the topic of classes, uh, this apparently seems to be the season for stuff to be opened and up. Uh, main municipal is doing a new town manager's class, day-long class in Augusta, uh, in early June, and I figured that I probably should go attend that. So I've signed up for, for that on June 5th, and, uh, Eastern Main Development Corporation's got another grant writing workshop in Milnoket on the 17th. I'm gonna go up to, so. See, I already said that I contacted the legis, I already filled you in on the whole, uh, legislative funding thing. Continuing to look at grant stuff anywhere we can on the town hall building. And still taking a look, chasing down Bearwell, Ozabby Fowler School, and everything else when, when time permits, so. Uh, the road commissioner report, and actually, a lot of my time the last couple of weeks is not surprising, has been, on, uh, road-type stuff. Uh, we got the grading contract, we got that signed, uh, got the plowing, uh, sanding bid package and the Maple Street paving package together. We're advertising right now for invitations to bid on both of those. Your first selectmen's meeting in June is when we'll open those sealed bids and you'll make decisions on those.
Did you put line road in June?
I haven't yet, because I thought we probably, I wanted to have another conversation, because, uh, about exactly what we're gonna do is, and do a little more research on. This one was pretty easy, shim and overlay. This one, I'm gonna do some more research on what we have to do as far as binder and levels and everything like that.
Yeah.
So, not there yet, plus, we had decided we were gonna put that out for fall paving.
Right.
Who's doing all the skid works?
No, I'm close.
I mean, they're everywhere, there's double dome, it's in the intersection, right, right here, and then there was like all the way down Main Street.
No idea.
On Lysit Avenue.
Well, I'd say it's my boy, but he blew his transmission out, so it wasn't him.
No, I, no idea.
Is it just for find his out, why they do it, or is it, I thought it was anger, but it's just for finding.
It's competition among the boys.
Okay.
It's just the power, just all that power.
It's what?
All that power.
We've started.
You're sitting on.
Yeah.
We started work on, uh, well, we've done a couple of culverts on the line roaming, Chris is gonna start, uh. Newt's are gonna actually do the grinding on that for us, and they're gonna start that right off, I think.
I talked to him today, sounded like Monday.
So, uh, they're gonna do that, and then, uh, John's gonna do the grading on that when we're ready to do that. And then, like I said, I still need to put that out to bid for the paving. Uh, with, uh, for really two reasons, one being the South Sangreal Range Road has needed some desperate attention for quite a number of years. And the fact that, you know, they're gonna have a lot of traffic up there for Wilson Service on Saturday. Uh, we've got Scott down there doing some work on that yesterday and today, trying to get that cleaned up and a little bit more passable. Uh, we were hopeful that we'd be able to get John on with the grader Friday, but the weather hasn't cooperated, so he's not gonna be able to do that. But he is probably going to start grading in Sangerville. Uh, again, the weather, weather plays a role in this, but, uh, next week sometime. Uh, he and I went, visited every road in town yesterday. Uh. And next week, I guess next week and the week after, we're gonna work on getting Maple Street ready to go for paving. And that's pretty much all I have.
Does Maple Street, does it just get shimmed, or does it get shimmed and ditched? It's getting ditched.
Yeah.
Culvert, that's what I figured.
Probably between 300 and 350 feet of culverts going up there.
Yeah, they're gonna pay almost as much for culverts as we are for paving.
But the paving won't, fold down the ditch.
Butch and I went up there and was on our hands and knees digging, and we found culverts two feet under the ground that. Who knows how long, and that blood very solid, they've probably been there 20 years, not flowing nothing.
How come it's full of potholes? I don't get it.
Water's just a funny thing.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So that is town manager and road commissioner report. Item nine, select board concerns. I have none.
I think I'm good.
Item 10, executive session, we have none.
I'm making motion on my agenda.
Having an sopri at Josh?
Uh-huh, I didn't have ones, so I had a once supper at like 4 o'clock.
Well, I second that motion. We're adjourned, and the time is. 7:26.